I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Kluk, Stube, Engberg.
Please join me in the Pledge of Legions. Pledge of Legions. Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the doorway when you came in. We've got one presentation tonight. Mr. Charvat, Sarpy County, no, it's not Sarpy County Economic Chamber, now it's Gross Sarpy. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Councilman Mayor. I'll try and be pretty quick, but I have a lot of good numbers for you guys today. So you guys should have the reports. I think we mailed them to you, but broadly speaking, we are potentially on set to have a record year for, we're already had a record year for building permit valuations in the county. We're kind of on pace to do that for single-family plat, single-family permits, and then potentially multifamily permits. So just real quick to put some of those numbers in perspective, already this year, you can see across the county, we're at $2.1 billion in building permit valuations. Papillion alone, at almost $1.1 billion. Our highest past year was 2019 with $1.5 billion. So we're already past that, and I'm gonna be jumping all over the place, so I apologize. In regards to single-family housing permits, we're on track to beat last year's record. Last year, we had a record of 1,121. We're already at 999 this year. Multifamily housing permits will be kind of close there. We're at 543 in the county right now. The highest record number we've had was 745 back in 2018. And then the one to kind of watch out for would be single-family platted lots. In 2017, we had a pretty remarkable year. That year, 2,682. We're just under 1,500 single-family plats so far this year across the county. So those numbers are great. Some other numbers that are kind of bittersweet a little bit, you can go back and look at the labor force statistics. At the bottom of that first page, you can see Sarpy County, this past September, we had an unemployment rate of 1.3%. So I believe that is the lowest we've ever recorded in the county. I think the state also is about at 2.2. I think they're tied for the lowest they've ever had. But to put that a little bit in perspective, right now, there are 1,000, essentially 1,300 folks right now that our list is unemployed. So those are individuals that are looking for work. Just broadening it out to the Omaha Metro, since that's our labor pool, there are 11,000 kind of unemployed as of September. Just comparing that to how many jobs are out there. If you go on Indeed, search Omaha Jobs, you can find 25,000 jobs for those 11,000 folks. And then if you kind of filter, there are over 11,000 jobs paying over $1,750 for those 11,000 folks that are currently looking for work in the Omaha Metro. So it's a great time to be a job seeker, but a tough time to be a business looking for employees. I'm gonna jump over to the project sheet. We did land two projects this past quarter. So the first one, speaking about companies looking for employees, is we landed a, it's a kind of a customer service data entry, not necessarily a, kind of a, what's the right word, a phone call, why am I blanking on that, one of those operations, but kind of an office used for 685 jobs they're gonna be looking to fill. We don't know exactly the wages on, but they are here, said they'll pay about market rate. And we also landed R&amp;R Building Number 4 this past quarter as well. So the R&amp;R buildings, as I'm sure you know, are kind of just doing phenomenal. They're building to full with factory toys and their fulfillment center there. There's also cheerleading operation there. Other things that we're seeing, we're getting a lot of manufacturing projects coming through the door. We're having a tough time competing for those, because a lot of them are looking for 100-plus of skilled labor. We have a tough time with our low unemployment. Also, our sites, we've been so successful over the past couple of years, our sites are kind of all taken up. But we continue to submit for those. And I guess just one other comment in regards to, when we go out and talk to businesses, one of the things we hear a lot is, obviously, we can't find workers. So there's only been one business so far that I've talked to that's, said they're about 99% to 98% full. That's a, it's a business here in Papillion, they have a production facility. They have 300 employees. Their pay starts at $1,750 an hour, and they'll, every November, they reassess that wage to make sure they're at the top of the kind of pay scale in the county. So that's essentially what businesses have to compete with right now if they want to stay fully staffed, is that $1,750 an hour plus with full benefits. So it's certainly a tough time out there for finding employees, but everything else is looking pretty good. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to-
Any questions, Mr. Charvat? Appreciate it. Thanks for the partnership. Ms. Powers, Administrative Freeport Police.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to announce the promotion of Orrin Orchard to the Papillion Police Department's Deputy Chief position. Orrin has almost 26 years of dedicated police experience, and of which 16 of those years were serving the Papillion Police Department's command staff. And he has served in almost every position that the police department has. So congrats to Orrin, well deserved. And a thank you to the Civil Service Commission, the city's HR department, and specifically Carrie Svensson and Chief Widded for all of the work that was put into this promotion. And this was to fill the position that was vacated when Chief Widded was promoted earlier this year. So congratulations, Deputy Chief Orchard, well deserved. And continuing with well deserved congratulations within the police department, congratulations to Chief Widded for being selected as one of the 2021 distinguished alumni of Papillion La Vista High School, the Hall of Fame inductees. Chief Widded was inducted into the Hall of Fame at the school foundation's annual gala on October 23rd. Congratulations, Chief. And then a couple of quick reminders. This Friday, November 5th, is Friday Night Under the Lights at the Landing. That's from 8, or from 5 to 8:00 PM. Come hungry and dress warm. There'll be seven food trucks there for this event, and we'll have the fire pits and everything going. So come on down if you can. And then also a reminder that city offices and facilities will be closed on Thursday, November 11th, in observation of Veterans Day. And as you may recall, the purchase of additional American flags for display on Highway 370 and Highway 50 within city limits was included in this current year's budget, and we did get those flags purchased. So the flags will be installed prior to Veterans Day next week, and to include with the flags that we install on Washington Street. So we're excited to expand those flags throughout the community. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Sunday. Do you have any proponents or opponents in council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Kluk, Stube, Engberg, 880-0.
Motion passes. Next is Item E1, Ordinance 1946. The next four items are all related. An ordinance to annex certain real estate to the city of Papillion, Nebraska, and to provide for an effective date. This is a public hearing. I'll open it. Do you have any proponents or opponents? Close of public hearing. Item E2, Ordinance 1947, an ordinance to change the official zoning map of the city of Papillion in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code, to adopt the zoning map and to apply existing or future zoning regulations, property use regulations, building ordinances, electrical ordinances, plumbing ordinances, and all other regulatory ordinances of the city of Papillion pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute 16901, and to provide for an effective date. It's also a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Close of public hearing. E3, Ordinance 1948, an ordinance to detach certain real estate from the corporate limits of the city of Papillion, Nebraska, and to provide for an effective date. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Proponents or opponents? Close of public hearing. E4, Ordinance 1949, an ordinance to change the official zoning map of the city of Papillion in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code, to adopt the zoning map and to apply existing or future zoning regulations, property use regulations, building ordinances, electrical ordinances, plumbing ordinances, and all other regulatory ordinances of the city of Papillion pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute 16901, and to provide for an effective date. I'll open the public hearing. Any proponents or opponents? Close of public hearing. Item E5, Ordinance 1954, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to MU Mixed Use for the property legally described as a plating of part of Tax Lot 5, a tax lot located in the east half of the northeast quarter of Section 34, also together with part of the west half of said northeast quarter of Section 34, all located in Township 14 North Range, 12 east of the 6:00 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of South Washington Street and Highway 370. The applicant is 84370 Main Street LLC. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents? If you'd state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
1140 West Center Road on behalf of the applicant, 84370 Main Street LLC. With me today is Jesse Calabretto and Jason Thien with E&amp;A Engineering, part of the development team. I had sent some exhibits in, and I'm wondering how we tee those up. There we go. So some of this you all have maybe seen, and I know if there's residents here, when we had our neighborhood meeting, they probably saw a lot of what we're presenting today. The good news is not much has changed in the last year as we've continued to work with staff on this submittal. But with this, obviously, the, this property is, everyone knows it, it's at the corner of 84th or South Washington and 370. It's about 112 acres of ground, two parcels, longtime farmed agricultural. Obviously, the tower's there, and when we're, as we go through this process, we're probably gonna call this the Tower District, aptly named for the water tower there. But it's a unique site in that the city of Papillion is literally, as you all know, grown around this particular site. So when we came to develop this and looked at it, we know there have been other developers that have tried to develop this over the years. We wanted to take a different approach to this, and it was really, how do we make this piece of ground look as though it's been here with the rest of the city as it's grown around it? So we looked at the uses where you have residential to the north, residential to the west, you have the 370 corridor and all the commercial uses that are going on there, as well as the office uses and everything that's on the east side of South Washington Street. We didn't necessarily want to or intend to disrupt everything that's going on. We more wanted to create a development that adheres to everything that is already going on there. Not to say that everyone loves what we're proposing, but at the same time, we wanted to make something that was not completely noxious to the existing uses here. So as we approached this, we engaged HDR, an architectural firm in here, along with E&amp;A, to create and design a master plan for this. And as part of that, we met actually in this facility for the course of, better course of a week, and we went through these various iterations of a site plan. And as we did that, I know we invited some city council members, I know we invited planning commission members, I know we invited planning staff, and the idea was, we wanted to get this right. We didn't want a bunch of iterations. We wanted folks giving us input on how best the city of Papillion could accept this development. And so we went through various iterations, and over the course of about a month, the final design was actually come together by the development team, which is the, and this is us working in this building, in this room, actually, about a year ago. But the next slide, eventually, we came up with this master plan. And the master plan is just that, it's our concept for what this, what this property could be developed. And this is gonna be a traditional mixed-use development. And the idea was, we wanted to create a new town center for the city of Papillion. So we wanted something that everyone could be proud of. Obviously, Old Town Papillion is just, just to the north and the east of us, but we wanted something where it's walkable, it's inviting, it's your true work, live, play concept. And so the way we went about this was creating a number of different uses in the confines of, like I said earlier, having existing residential, having the 370 corridor, and having the office, commercial uses to the east of us. And we came up with this concept. So the next slide, what we really did is we created zones. So zones 1 through 10, oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. This is an aerial vision of what this could look like in the future, once we are fully developed. This is a park center, you know, we wanted to create an area where, as folks live and play, this is gonna be kind of the little crown jewel of the development with an open space right in the center of the development. I think there might be one more. So, and then when we get here, this is the actual zone. So zones 1 through 10, and I'm just gonna briefly walk through the zones. But the idea was, where you have residential to the north and to the west, we thought it was important to continue to bring single-family residential uses in those areas. So everything gets blended into the development. So if you go to the next slide, we'll start talking about zones. So Zone 1 is your traditional, single-family residential lots. These lots are 70 to 85 feet in width. We think it's blended appropriately with the existing residential uses. And then as you go to Zone 3, which is immediately right door, right next door, this will be a single standalone lot. So we're not plating this as separate lots, but this will be, if you can think of cluster housing, these would be folks that are empty nesters, these are townhomes, these are cottages. These are folks that, you know, don't want the single-family residential concept, they don't want the maintenance. This will be an all-encompassing, standalone HOA-type development. Again, a different residential use, a little more intense residential use, but a little bit further away from the residential uses to the west and the north. When you go to Zone 4, I'm sorry, yeah, Zone 4, which is the blue highlighted area, these are more commercial uses. So the one thing we thought of is, folks wouldn't necessarily want to have their back door along that 370 corridor, and in turn, there might be users, i.e. your grocery stores, your banks, those people that want that high visibility, they do want to park themselves along 370 on the south side there. So we purposely master planned this for grocery stores, maybe a fast food operation, storage facility, senior care facility, a medical office, a bank, and a daycare. The daycare, you can't really see it, but it's just on the north side of where it says Zone 4. Obviously, as families come into the single family, having that daycare right there will be helpful. The one thing I want to note about Zone 4, because it's interesting, as we were going through that design charrette, we really did try to listen to everybody and constituents of yours as to what we were trying to do here. So initially, we had a bank, or I'm sorry, a C-store on that corner, and we heard from constituents that, hey, with the residential component, traffic, and having a C-store on that, on that, on that west side there might not be the best use. So what did we do? We listened, and we moved that C-store all the way to the opposite side of our development. And I can rightfully say that we've actually had a number of C-stores approach us for that location, and we have continued to say, no, that's gonna be a non-C-store, for the very reason of, we just, we want to uphold our end of the bargain and make sure that what we represent to you all and the residents will actually come to fruition. So that will always be a daycare or a bank, kind of a low-traffic type situation that serves both our residential folks and the folks to the west and the north. Zone 6, which is in the orange, this is gonna be kind of a mixed, in the sense that you're gonna have some cottage, some townhome-type uses in here, but now we're starting to get into a little bit of the mixed use where you might have a hotel, you might have an office building. One of the cool concepts, which is that, that home business is, you know, a number of years ago, folks used to hang their shingle in their homes, and they'd have the retail bay at the bottom of the house, and they live above. We thought we would try that concept here. The one thing we wanted to beat home upon ourselves is Papillion's a very local-centric community, and so we want folks to live and play, we want people to have businesses like this. We want to focus on having local folks populate this development. So we thought the home business model might be a really cool concept. So we have, we have programmed in there about five to six of these types of homes or businesses that could go in here, as we continue to blend more of the commercial, more intense uses away from the existing residential, and as we move east. If we go to the next slide, now we're in Zone 7. So Zone 7's about 11 and 1/2 acres, one of the bigger parcels in our development. This will be your traditional market-rate multifamily development. The reason we put this multifamily here for a number of reasons is, number one, we wanted to kind of keep the, the single family away from the multifamily, just for a blend of uses, traffic, that sort of thing, but also the topography of this site, actually, that's the, one of the lowest points of this development. And so we thought, you know, folks don't necessarily love staring at large buildings, so we tried to tuck this in the lowest point of the development, because it could be three to five stories, just depending on how that, how that shakes out. We don't have an exact plan for what this will be. I'm guessing it'll be somewhere between 250 to maybe 325 units when all is said and done on that particular piece. But, you know, it's, it's always important, when you have a mixed-use development like ours, the way our retail, the way our offices, the way all those businesses, those local businesses thrive is having bodies, having people live in those buildings. So to have a true mixed use, we loved having the single family, we love having the cottages, but we need to have the multifamily. We need to have those folks going to the various businesses and retail facilities that we're, I'm about to tell you about. And that's how you create the one-stop shop, the live-work-play concept. So that will be our multifamily building or lot in that Zone 7. Next is gonna be Zones 6, I'm sorry, 8, 9, and 10. So 6, 8, 9, 10, these are truly, if you can think, it's, we're not having a downtown here, but this will be the downtown of, of the Tower District, in the sense that, think of retail on the bottom floor with maybe some condos above, maybe offices, maybe some more multifamily. But this is where people are gonna come on a Saturday night to go out, have a nice meal, bring their kids, go to that open space that I told you about. This will be the center of the development. And so there's a lot of plans and a lot of cool ideas, as you can see by the depictions, of what could be done here. To do that, you need folks, you need residential to make a true mixed use like this work. So that's really Zones 8, which is the top one. There, there may be a fast food use in there. Hotels on Zone 9, there'll be a parking garage in the middle of Zone 9 to the extent we need it. We're actually overparked on this entire development. And then Zone 10, finally, this will be a strictly office and maybe a higher-end restaurant use. Again, folks that want office, they're gonna want that hard corner of 84th and 370, so we thought that's a good place to park a use like that, to give them the visibility that they might need. So if we go to the next slide, when we talk about landscaping, and I, I mentioned a little bit earlier about the walkability, our streetscapes are gonna be pretty intense here. We wanted to have a nice buffer between our traffic, the landscaping, and our sidewalks. So this is just a quick depiction of what the sidewalks and landscaping's gonna look like, and we're obviously working with staff to make sure that everything that we do is compliant with city code. I think there's another picture of this coming up, one more, and then maybe a third one. So you can see, there's always gonna be a buffer. So I'm gonna get ahead of myself a little bit with the next slide, because that's, this is actually our preliminary plat. If it's okay, I know that's another agenda item, but I think it makes sense to maybe talk about this all at once. So here's our preliminary plat. Lots, there will be 85 lots. Obviously, there's 54 of those are the single family, but 55 lots. A whole new street grade, or grade is coming in, which I think the, the next slide, which is our final plan that will accompany our mixed-use development agreement, which will come before you all one more time. This actually gives a good kind of layout of the streets, and that's the last thing I wanted to talk about. So on the north side in Zone 8, that's Matthew Street, that'll be a ride-in, ride-out. Initially, that was supposed to be full movement, and working with staff, you know, we had concerns about having two full movements on Cedar Dale and Matthews, so we actually made that a ride-in, ride-out. It's hard to kind of decipher that, but that would be a ride-in. Cedar Dale will be a full-movement intersection just to the south there, and then Scott Road will again be a ride-in, ride-out. One of the things, as we laid this street grid out, it's important to keep in mind, is we didn't want a lot of straight streets. That's purposeful. We want people to slow down, we want people to enjoy it. We don't want people driving through here, going really fast. That's not the idea when you're trying to incorporate a new town center. So as you go west, so along South 90th, so Devon will be a full-movement intersection, same with Rawhide and same with Valley. One of the things that's accompanying our final plat is we're dedicating about 50 feet of our property on the west side for a future expansion of 90th Street. So our, our traffic study came back, it did not necessitate upgrading that to a three-lane intersection, even though we will have turn lanes coming into our project off of South 90th. And so we're gonna work with city staff about maybe repaving South 90th and making sure that that gets improved. I will say, as you get, as you come up to 370, that will be expanded. We had a lot of questions from residents as to, hey, that the stacking there is an issue. That's getting expanded to accommodate the additional traffic. So I don't want people to get up in arms about not having the three lane, to the extent that the city ever deems it warranted, we'll have to have a conversation about how that gets done. But the right-of-way for the future expansion is being dedicated in connection with our final plat. And so then lastly, we'll talk about South Harrison. We, we got a lot of questions about South Harrison Street, which is the connection going north through city-owned property and the school-owned property, I shouldn't say city, it might be, school owns it. We support that connection. That connection, I, I know staff in the city was supportive, to just provide for connectivity. I'll let Mr. Sersma talk maybe a little bit more about how the city likes to have connectivity. We're okay with it, even though we don't necessarily own any of that ground, we don't control that ground, but we're happy to help the city facilitate those conversations. You know, the reality is, is a lot of folks that are at our project aren't gonna be going north into the residential area. In some senses, this might be a benefit for the folks that live north. It's an easier way to get to South Washington Street or 90th Street. I'm sure there's gonna be some, maybe some ease of traffic on school days, but for the most part, our folks in, in this development, they're going to South Washington, or they're going to 90th. We don't foresee them ever really going north, just because that's a, that's a residential neighborhood with not a lot of outlets, or outlets. So, you know, we wanna get, we wanna get going tomorrow if we could. We get a lot of questions as to, you know, how, how fast can we get this done? We'd love to move faster if we could, but this, these things just take time. And so, and like I said, when we started, we want to do this right, and I genuinely think it's, it's really fun to sit up here, because a year ago, when we had our, our neighborhood meeting, we presented this plan to them, and we showed residents what we wanted to do, and we really haven't changed all that much. We've worked with staff on some, some design issues, but the reality is, what you're seeing today hasn't changed from that initial design charrette that we did. So in our minds, we kind of think that was a good spending of time, it was worth it, it really helped us expedite this process. So with that, I'll probably sit down. I'm sure there's gonna be questions, but we appreciate your consideration, and we're here for questions.
Thank, thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Anybody who wants to speak in favor? Do you have any opponents? Or anybody neutral? Yeah. And when you come up, if you'd state your name and address for the record.
I'm Carol Coons. I live at 1012 South Madison. I don't care if they develop that land. I'm just against two things. Should've been here a year ago, but I really wasn't aware of this whole thing. I don't want Valley Road to go all the way through. That school is busy. You put a through street through there, oh my God. The parents use that park all the time, Trumbull Park. I don't want them to put houses there. We have a water problem there. Every month, the water department is down there working on that. If they fix that water part right there, that water problem is just gonna go on farther down and cause more problems. Harrison Street, he just said that they didn't care if it went through. I don't want it to go through, because that'll mess up the park. We have enough. He said the old town, let's keep our little Valley Road and Harrison old town, not new development. Okay?
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes. And if you'd state your name for the record when you come up. Welcome.
I'm Tony Smith, and I lived on Valley Road for 55 years, 111 Valley Road. And the biggest concern I got, you know, the city, just passed a week or a week and a half, with the sewer truck going down through all of our, and that don't have to be connected to the one on the other side of the ditch. And that, and there sewer line is not gonna be big enough to handle all what they want to do, unless they're gonna put a new one in. Yes, I know they're gonna have to do something with that, and I know the trees are gonna have to go, but that's not my concern, though. But I think that's the city's concern. But I do think that they ought to let people know more of what's going on. And I know, I know the people working back there and stuff like that. And I know people on our street have a lot of sewer problems. And I know the neighbor next to us had to dig it up because the city sewer, where it comes into the house, the house gets plugged up completely solid, full of tree rust, was not, it was a clay pile that used to handle it back in the 50s. And, I mean, I grew up in a different town, but I come down here in 1958, and when I come down here, I remember when they put the street in, and they done a good job, I know that, back in them days, but they just tried to plan and get too much on the small sewer system. And I, I do think that they're on your lot, they should do about that. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else? Yes, sir. Welcome.
My name is April Quintanilla, and I live in Valley Road. I don't have any claims about the development, but I am a little bit concerned about runoff situations. We have an existing channel behind my house that runs all the way to the Valley Road, in the back part of the Valley Road, and I don't see any water control system- And I don't see any water control system, wet pond, dry pond, or anything like that in the development. This situation is going for about 15 years already. That channel used to be very shallow, but with a new development that went through the Overland Hills Church and the other neighborhoods, we added more water to the channel and keeps running and keeps getting deeper and deeper. I am affected already for this situation, but what I see in the future, if I don't see any water control system in this new neighborhood, it will affect more, a little bit, in the east side, is that right? In the east side of the channel. And then that's my highest concern, because the runoff situation and seeing the business development going on is very, very, very high. And if they can address that situation, if they can provide a water control system approved by the city engineer, if there's one, that will be great. I don't have any concerns about it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? If you'd state your name and address for the record.
Edward Winiger in Monocreek.
Address, please.
1709 Ridge Drive.
Thank you.
So I lived over by Valley Road for about four years. My kids and I used to go play in the park down the street. And I would agree with Mo was mentioning before about Valley, Harrison. I mean, the cornfield getting developed, not a big deal, but yeah, I think that there should definitely be a segregation kept between that new development and that neighborhood. And then my kids go to Trumbull Park, so I'm over there frequently picking up kids. And I, it's a mess and up already with the amount of traffic there. And I can't imagine with that, plus people trying to get through those two streets, would just make it even more of a nightmare. So it's quiet, it's peaceful, and heading through traffic would not be a positive to that, so.
Anybody else? Yes. Welcome.
I'm Carol Kemp. I live at 108 Matthews Drive, which is right across from the development. And the stream runs behind our house. And so I am two concerns, two thoughts of how, if creative ways to work with the water, you know, I have no expert on it, but to do earth-friendly things and pollinator-friendly things over there, I would love to see that. But I am concerned, because that erosion on our side of the, of the stream is a concern. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Sharon Ballard Walsh, Shirley Walsh, 105 Valley Road. Mostly, I think, what everybody else was saying, just worried about the water and the drainage and the sewer. I've seen the sewer across the creek actually overflow into the creek a few years ago, so I know there's issues with that. I think a big concern is the traffic. If you were the third house up on Valley Road from Washington, and as it is with the hill, people are flying out of town and they come over that hill, and it's fast. So you sometimes have trouble pulling out on a good day, let alone a bad winter day. And if you add to that traffic, and then Mathis, and then a traffic light, I mean, I'm glad, I think you said right-in, right-out on Mathis, which I think is probably a good thing. But I am concerned about people pulling out. I'm concerned about even now parking along Valley Road, because a lot of cars now are being parked in the street overnight. So maybe we need to look at the streets and how we're going to do the lights and the parking for people. So yeah, I think we have a lot of concerns about the school kids and the cars in the street. And then opening Valley Road all the way up to Ninetieth, I see is going to be used, and how are we going to cope with that and not have a bunch of accidents or somebody getting hurt?
Thank you. Anybody else?
I've got a question.
Mr. Mumgarde.
Could you, could you come back, please? Yeah, I, yes, please. I have a question for people who, you live on Valley Road. I obviously don't. But it's been my perception over the years that the congestion around Trumbull Park School gets terrible. And it would be, it's also my impression that some of that traffic is going up and down Valley Road in front of your house. So when I looked at this plat, I thought, well, extending Valley Road over to Ninetieth Street's going to help that, because, A, it gives, it gives a lot of people places to park that aren't down, aren't down in front of your street, in front of your house. It gives an additional way to get in and out of that school area.
And I'm not against it going through. I didn't say that.
See, and yeah, that's where I'm troubled with, is that, okay, if we don't extend Valley Road, don't we just continue with that trouble there?
I'm against it extending, and maybe we need more ways in and out, and I know that's going to disagree with other people. And I'm at the far end, so I'm at the end where everybody's trying to turn onto 84th Street. That's the problem. I don't know right now, there's a lot of cars parking in the street, just like kind of permanently parking in the street, because we're the parking side. And then you have a line of cars and you're trying to pull out. I think there'll be more traffic flowing through, not against that. I just want to know how these people are turning left onto 84th Street when people are flying over the hill.
Oh, I see your point there, yeah.
And then the crosswalk that used to be there for the kids to push is gone. And I don't know where, not Mathis and maybe Cedar Dale, there's going to be a light. How is that going to go? Is traffic going to back up sitting at a light?
Okay, well, I guess I'll say, well, thank you. And I'll just say, hey, anybody who wants to address my question about extending Valley Road to the west there and its impact on the congestion around the school, I guess I'd like to hear your thoughts.
I think the Valley Road extension might make sense. You might be right about that potentially solving some things. I think the Harrison side of it, like, people trying to get to the shopping center and come out of the shopping center and go into that neighborhood potentially quickly. I guess my question would be, don't they do, like, traffic studies for this stuff to figure these things out? Because I don't know all the answers, so.
Thank you. Welcome. If you'd state your name for the record.
03 South Washington Street. I was just wondering on that issue whether the traffic studies, impact studies have all been completed. And whether, basically, South Washington, the effect on that has been, and whether that island is going to extend all of the Mathis. I live at 1203, including right across the street from you guys' property, and I just wanted to know if there was going to be an island all the way, that was going to be a right-in, right-out. And again, I'll look at you, but, you know, I'll talk to you about it. But I'm just wondering if the traffic thing had been all done about Valley. And I mean, I just think it does release some congestion on others who could have made Washington Street pretty well.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? I'll close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I reacted too fast. Welcome.
Mike Tiedemann, 101 Somerset Drive. I'm not opposed to this being, developing made there. I guess I'm just questioning whether this is the right development for Papillion. I've heard you guys talk in the past about revitalizing downtown. This seems like that would be contradictory to that. Also, we have Shadow Lake. It's already a pretty big shopping center with apartments right next door and walking distance. We're having a hard time keeping people in those businesses, those spaces. What's going to happen when this one's built? That's my question.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Welcome.
926 South Madison Street. I live on the corner of Madison and Grunther, which is about diagonal to where the school is, Trumbull Park. And it is kind of a racetrack, but they do keep coming around. Parents just circle the block all the time. So I don't agree with Mr. Mumgarde in a whole lot in the last couple of city council meetings, but this time I do. They do need to extend Valley. They do need to extend Valley all the way to Ninetieth Street, because it's truly the only east-west between Ninetieth and 84th Street. I think it'll expedite traffic. I don't think it'll have a large impact as maybe some concern, I guess, residents that live on Valley Road. I think it'll help that. The other ones, when we get to the plat here, I'd like to discuss that, but that's a little later on in the meeting here. There'll be more east-west, which is really important. And so I'd like to see that happen. I don't think it'll be as big of an impact as people think it will be, and absolutely needs to be done. We need an east-west from Ninetieth to 84th Street that will help expedite traffic out of the neighborhood. Right now, they come down Grunther to Madison or Harrison, and then they pick up Valley, or they'll come around the corner, and then they'll head down to Crest Road and come out to 84th Street on that. I think that'll pull all that traffic out of that neighborhood and be more streamlined to one avenue, north, or east-west on Valley Road. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mumgarde.
Okay, well, on this idea of eliminating the congestion that seems to exist around Trumbull Park, what do you think, the South Harrison Street connection? I understand the concerns about increasing traffic in your neighborhood, but isn't that also an additional way to get that congestion in and out more quickly?
I agree. I'm not opposed to going Harrison farther south. I'm not at all opposed to that at all. I think it needs to be done. My only concern, and we'll get to that when we get to the plat, is that, basically, we'll have a straight street. You know, Jeff Thompson from the, the worst part once told me that the straighter the street, faster the traffic, and that is no truer words spoken. And so from Lincoln on Harrison, all the way, basically, that street, that Harrison's going to be a straight shot all the way to basically Cedar Dale at that point. And tonight, I drove that street on the way here, a lot of on-street parking on that, a lot of one-car garage homes. They park on the street, there'll be two or three cars in each property. That might be a problem, and I'm not sure how to address that. You certainly can't widen that street. And I would never take away, or suggest taking away parking, on-street parking for those residents that live there. That would be unfair to them. So I'm not sure what the, what the answer is, but Harrison now terminates at Valley, and Valley terminates at Harrison, and that's creating a problem. And the only way to do that is create a through-street, I think, both ways.
Okay, I'll just ask you. Yeah, I understand your concern about traffic on Harrison Street, because it does go all the way up there to Lincoln. Although, when I sit and look at it, I think if I lived further north, past your house, and I wanted to get out of the neighborhood, I wouldn't want to go into this mess of winding streets. So I'm not so sure that extending South Harrison has that kind of an impact on the rest of Harrison. And what do you think?
For our neighborhood, I mean, we're going to build a city center, right? I mean, that's really part of this development is. And there's only one option to put a through-street in, and that's Harrison. There's no other options between Ninetieth and 84th Street, none.
But then it ends.
Park area with that new development. And I think it needs to be impacted. I can't see myself driving to 84th or Ninetieth Street just to go around the block to get into that. And I don't think it's going to bring a lot of traffic out. It might, but I don't know. I guess maybe these guys can speak to the traffic study on what they, what they discovered.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
I'm Donna Wilcox. I live at 901 Rawhide Road. And I'm sort of on the other side of whatever everybody else is talking about on Valley. We live right on the corner of Ninetieth and Rawhide Road, right into the entrance of our subdivision. And you did address my one question, and I'm very happy to hear that, about widening Ninetieth Street. At the last couple of meetings, we have talked about not having it widened to the east, but to the west only, because with all the children going up and down and all that. And I appreciate that totally. I would like to say a couple things. I am really for this proposal. I think it's a long time overdue. I do not think they'll have any effect on Shadow Lake. The kind of businesses that you are proposing here are not the businesses that are in Shadow Lake. These are doctors, lawyers, maybe a hair salon, I don't know, those kind of things. Small businesses, not like what's over in Shadow Lake. It'd be great if the people living there, especially with a lot of 55-plus kind of homes, I know Chuck and I are thinking, we live right on that corner, maybe in 10 years from now, want to move across Ninetieth Street and find one of those places. But I think it answers a lot of questions. All the businesses are community-minded businesses, businesses that the community uses, like childcare and 55-plus, you know, or nursing home kind of things, doctors, all those kinds, small grocery stores. It would, I'd love to have a really nice restaurant there, like Firebird or something like that. We really need that in Papillion, and I think if it were there with this kind of thing around it, it'd make a big go. So I'm a bit cheerleader for this. I really would like to have you call it the Water Tower Place. I'm going to say that again, I told you that last time. But there's so many new housing areas going in, like, I don't know, Grand Hills. What, you know, where is that? But if you said Water Tower Place, people would know exactly where it was. The businesses could pick up on that name. I think it'd be a great marketing thing to do. So that's mine.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll close the public hearing and just put a quick point of reference. There were a couple of comments, and legitimate ones, about stormwater management and the creek and that type of thing. There's a lot of regulations around stormwater management, both federal and state. And we've got engineers on staff, there's regional partnerships around that. So that is an item that has a lot of serious consideration as the development occurs, both at the whole development level, how's the water flow, but even if it is, as an individual building is built, how do they retain their water on site? There's a park system in there that plays a role in that as well. So your comments are noted, and they are serious, and there's a lot of engineering work put into those. But if anybody has any specific questions about a certain area in their land, feel free to reach out to the planning department. Maybe they can help facilitate a conversation with either the developer or our engineering staff and take care of some of that. Mr. Mumgarde.
Can the developer get back up there, please? Okay. Let's talk about Trumbull Park. I see here Zone Five, which is, you know, basically a drainage area. Okay, Zone Five, and it has a bunch of trails through there. Is that an expansion of Trumbull Park? How does that fit or not fit with the current Trumbull Park?
That's a great question. This is intended to be a park. We have not yet progressed with the city as to whether or not they want to replace Trumbull Park with this, move some of those, some of the equipment or new equipment down here. But suffice to say, at the very least, this will be in addition to Trumbull Park. Whether or not Trumbull Park is closed or anything, I don't know. That's really up to the city staff. But we will have some park features in this, the trail system, park equipment, that sort of thing.
I guess, is that geographically usable as a park?
Absolutely. So somebody asked, I'm going to answer another question while I answer your question. Somebody asked about, I mean, we will, as the mayor said, we will apply with all the stormwater detention, retention, that sort of thing. Zone Five, that detention pond, which is an outlet I, that is the largest stormwater retention basin in our district. That area in and of itself, though, that's, that's a 1.4 acre piece of ground that'll be open space. The problem that we all have, both us, any developer in the city, is that's all weapons, that's all governed by the core of engineers. So we have to be very sensitive about doing anything in that area, including improving. So that, at the very minimum, we can do the trail system, but we don't quite know if we can actually put layer-on equipment in there. So as we continue on in our conversation with the core, we'll get to that point. But that will be to the west of that detention pond. That'll be green space, that'll be open.
Thank you.
Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Beller. Obviously, this is, we're kind of early on in the process. We're talking about change of zone. We got a subsequent preliminary plat, that's, we're going to have final plat subdivision agreement. So there's a lot of work that has to be done. Can you talk a little bit about the phasing of the project? Obviously, I don't know if the zones match up with your phasing, but this is going to be a long-term project, it's going to take years to get this really built out. Can you talk a little bit about the phasing? Can you talk a little bit about the phasing? And I'll also have another comment after you make your comment.
And while I answer your question, I'll answer another question, which is the Shadow Lake question that we've got. We don't want to be Shadow Lake. This is different. We, we envision this as more local. And I can say that because we set a no to a lot of, of what people traditionally think as big box retailers. We had a lot of folks that wanted to come in here, and that's not our vision. That's not what we wanted. And frankly, we didn't think that's what you all wanted. So we didn't want to shove that down your throats and do that in this development. The key to the success of this development is the phasing. The key is getting that Zone 1 and that Zone 2 residential going as quickly as we can. The other key is getting that Zone 7 committed to. We're pretty far down the road on folks that want to take that ground tomorrow, as soon as we get our final plat done. The same is true for that Zone 3. And then as that is all coming on, we have interest from grocers. We have interest from a daycare. We have interest from banks. We have interest from an office. All of that will follow as you bring that residential online. In a perfect world, could this take 10 years to fully develop? Absolutely. If you look at the city of Omaha and the way they did Exarban, that took 15 years. We're not Exarban by any means, but a project like this could take 10 years. Who knows what the world is with COVID and everything else? But I bet, and I, I think, I'm, I'm confident in saying, you'll see that residential component, that Zone 7, Zone 4, and some of the uses in Zone 9. Three years within the final plat, I can see a lot of those folks coming out of the ground. Because one of the, one of the impetus on us is we have folks that want to start breaking ground next fall. I don't think that's realistic based on the installation. This will be an SID, an installation of all the public improvements. I think that's gonna take all of 2022 and all, a little bit of 2023 to get that all in. So I'm, we're kind of projecting and telling folks, I think by the end of 2023, you're, you're doing your, your construction, your ground up, your elevations, your foundations. So maybe that's the answer to your question.
It did, kind of leads me into my comment. I think we've got a lot of good comments tonight, not only about stormwater. You can see that you've already kind of identified locations for stormwater. Talk about, you know, the congestion at the, at the school, which obviously, if you're looking at Zone 1, Zone 2, that infrastructure is going to almost eliminate some of that congestion right away. And so obviously, some individuals don't want Valley Road to go through, others do want it to go through. I'm a proponent of connectivity, so I look at that as being a positive, and you doing it, kind of that first part of your project, I think will be beneficial to, to everything that exists in that particular area. So I appreciate that, that.
Say something. If I said that we don't want connectivity, then I misspoke. We like connectivity. We're not, we propose things, city changes, city staff changes that design. At one point in time, we had a bull sack in Zone 1 on Valley, and that was the comment was, there's concern with traffic up on Valley, and as it comes on to 90th. So by having that connectivity on Valley Street, having that connectivity on South Harrison, it's only gonna alleviate, I think, what's an existing problem today. So I just wanted to say that. I mean, we support connectivity, but it's not necessarily our call as to whether and how streets.
Yeah, and, and Mayor, one more comment. There was questions about traffic studying. Obviously, you had somebody do a traffic study. Uh, I think the other thing to note is that there was a, a separate consultant that actually reviewed some of that information, provided some comments back. So that's another way of getting some, another opinion relative to some of the information that was presented. So I think that's, that's beneficial for the, for the people in the audience to recognize we do have another set of eyes and looking at the actual traffic study that was done by the consultant.
Mr. Mungard.
Okay, let's go to that South Harrison extension, the intersection of South Harrison and Valley Road. Seeing that, looking at it as now, it's just a typical four-way intersection. I frankly don't see any reason for people to be leaving this area and going north on Harrison into the neighborhood up to the north. But I do see reason for people on the north to be able to get out by coming south. And I also see that that connection can help with the Trumbull Park problems around the school. And maybe you're not the right one to ask, but can you redesign that interchange so that it swings around? And if you're going north on South Harrison, out of your development, the only way to go is west on the extension of Valley to 90th Street. You can't go east, and you can't go north, but you can come south. Can you, what would it take to redesign that interchange to have that effect?
So the reason we need to add that jog on the South Harrison there is because of weapons. So all, there's a lot of weapons in there that we need to be mindful of, and so we actually had to shift that drive. That's where that kink came in, and we lost a residential lot because of that. That's why you have that kink. As you go north past that black line, that the dark black line, that's not our problem. Fortunately, I can't answer that because I have no idea who could.
Well, I assume that's city property because it's a park. All right, well, if whoever owns that says it's okay, because you're adding all that green space, can you get that road turning to the west so that people cannot leave this area, go north, go north of Valley Road, or go east on Valley Road?
That's a good question. I, I might defer to the city on whether or not that's an option.
So I think Mr. Surtman's got it noted.
Okay, well, I'm getting ahead of myself, but we're gonna get to the preliminary plat. And I'm assuming if we approve this preliminary plat, that kind of a change can then be made before the final plat?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I'll close the public hearing. Next is Item E7, Ordinance 1956. Did I skip? Oh, I skipped one. I flipped ahead too fast. I'm sorry. Item E6, Ordinance 1955. An ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R4 PUD2 multi, multifamily residential with a planned unit development overlay for the property legally described as attractive land being part of the southeast quarter of Section 31. Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located northwest of South 120th Street and Shram Road, the applicant's Ashbury Hills Development LLC. Public hearing, I'll open it. Proponents, welcome.
Evening, Jason Thiel and E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Bill Valley Road. Suite 100 here on behalf of the applicant. With me is Larry Jovanis, the attorney on project, on behalf of the applicant. This really is, uh, one of the final phases in, which has been a multi-phase project in Ashbury Hills, leading up to kind of finishing this up, save for a little bit of, of the project. I think if you just pull up the... Yeah, perfect. So. And so the, the darkened areas of this plat, of our preliminary plat, is, um, is what we're bringing forward. Everything else is kind of grayscaleed out, has been already platted and recorded, including the Missing Middle project down in the corner. And so this really constitutes finishing up the villa area, the PVA area that's been before you on the, on the east half of that project. There's 45 milli-units that's on this project that finishes up. It's basically a second phase. There's 54 attached, uh, single-family, which is everything that's kind of, uh, north of that triangular, uh, portion of the project. Those will be attached single-family, and then the remainder, 41 single-family homes are in the remainder of the middle of the project. They're adjacent to the school there. And so really, all that's left in this project would be the park area that's down, uh, in the corner, the southwest corner of this project, which is unsuable at this time, probably will be for quite some time. And then just north of that is another missing middle piece that they've not quite yet determined, uh, what they'd like to do. That would trigger, uh, 126th Street to have to come through, and that's a pretty good expense and, and really very little value yet for this area until sewer kind of gets worked out towards, uh, towards the west there with, uh, with the Sarpy County Agency there. We're under conditional approval, and we are good with all the comments. That'd be any other questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other proponents? Do you have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Item E7, Ordinance 1956, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. F1, Resolution R210214, a resolution to approve a special fireworks display permit for, and I mispronounce it every year, Niko Mahada to 811 Western Hills Drive on November 26, 2021, and observance at Dewali. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210214? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilwoman Klup. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Mungard.
Is the applicant here? Okay, I, I just want to say, how many years have we been doing this? It's been a number of years. Does anybody? I, I would just simply say, this has been going on for a lot of years, and I've never had one complaint about it. So thank you very much. Go have a good time.
Thank you. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I, I would concur with that. I, I live about three houses away from, from the applicant, and it's gone on for a number of years now. Never had any complaints relative to that, so obviously, I'm gonna support this.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mungard. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Klup. Stube. Ingberg. Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is F2, Resolution R210197. A resolution to approve a Class I liquor license for SKPN LLC doing business at Sushi Karma. 248 Olson Drive, Suite 101, Papillion, Nebraska, 68046, and a manager application for Teresa A. Heleny. This public hearing was held October 19th, one of our last council meetings. Motion to approve it was made by Councilman Ingberg, second was by Councilman Glover, and then it was tabled because the applicant was not here, and I believe council members wanted to have an opportunity to visit. So we are at council discussion. Motion, the previous motion is still live, and so we are at council discussion. Is the applicant here? Okay, for the council, we got some information in the City Hall that the business might actually be closed. And so it may be relevant to your discussion and your vote. And if that information's true, then probably one of two actions would be appropriate, would either be table it indefinitely or vote no. And if you do vote no, and for some reason it's, is opening, there's nothing prevents them from reapplying, so. That appropriate, Mr. Thiel?
Yes, you can do either, those two options.
Okay. Mr. Mungard.
Well, isn't there a third option? Since we only really make a recommendation on these.
Well, you could approve it and send it to Liquor Commission.
Yeah, the Liquor Control Commission makes the final decision. I would say, let's just go ahead and approve this, send it down to the state, and the state can sort it out.
You're the council. You have any option to do whatever you want to do.
Well, then I'm, I'm gonna vote in favor of it.
Well, the current motion on the floor is a motion, a, a motion to approve is the current motion.
Okay, I'm just gonna go ahead and vote for that and get this over with and send it to the state and let the state figure out if the place is open or gonna reopen or what's gonna happen.
Mr. Sunday.
So, Mr. Mungard, you're gonna blindly grant a liquor license to somebody that you don't even know and didn't bother to show up and ask, or, you know, to, to ask for this from us? Because last meeting, I, I made the point, I'm not gonna vote for, uh, the granting of a liquor license to anybody who's not willing to show their face and let me know who they are. So, so I'm still there. I'm not gonna vote for this.
Mr. Mungard.
Okay, I will explain that. No, I am not blindly doing anything. I read the application. The application for this liquor license has a whole lot of information. It tells us about the applicant, their background, et cetera, and about the business. It tells me everything I need to know about that applicant. And so with the realization that we do not approve liquor licenses, we make a recommendation to the state, and it is not done until the state makes the decision. For that reason, not going blindly into it, but because I see a whole lot of stuff on the application that is very beneficial to this person, I see no reason to recommend, uh, denial and put them through that, simply because we're not quite sure if it's open or not. So I'm saying, let's just give it to them or make that recommendation, send it to the state, and let the state decide if this business should get the liquor license or not.
Mr. Jaworski.
I agree with Mr. Sunday because I'm a fan of this also. I think if people come for a liquor license, especially during the summer when we have the, um, music series down at Shadow Lake, I think they, if they want a liquor license, I think they ought to have, they should come here and show an interest. If they don't come here and show an interest, why should we show an interest? I, I'm not gonna support this for the simple reason, I do believe people that come for liquor licenses should be here.
Any other council discussion? Okay, the motion on the table is for approval of Resolution R210197. A yes vote would be a positive recommendation, and a no vote would be a negative recommendation. Please vote.
Sunday. Mungard. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Klup. Stube. Ingberg. Five yeas, three nays by Sunday, Glover, and Jaworski.
Motion passes. Next is Item F3, Resolution R210207. It's a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as plating a part of Tax Lot 5, a tax lot located in the east half of the northeast quarter, Section 34, also together with part of the west half of said northeast quarter of Section 34. All located Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located on the northwest corner of South Washington Street and Highway 370. The applicant's is 84370 Main Street LLC. It's a public hearing. We'll take all of the comments from the previous item, carry them over to this one. But it is a public hearing. I'll reopen it. Proponents, welcome, and if you'd restate your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road, on behalf of the applicant. Um, thank you. I won't restate my program. I know we have lives outside of this. So, uh, here for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Oh, go ahead. Or neutral. Anybody want to talk, please come up. Welcome, and if you'd restate your name for the record.
96 South Madison Street. Um, could we bring up the, the zone map that's part of this? I'd just like to discuss and zoom in if we can. My only concern with the, I mean, you guys have done a great job. I think this is a great plan. We've lived in, in the neighborhood, Trumbull Park, for over 50 years. Moved in here in 69. I used to build ports up in this field.
Can you speak forward just so we can get it on the mic, because we do record?
Yeah, we've, I've lived in the neighborhood for over 50 years, and, or my family has. And I went to Trumbull Park, so I'm familiar with the area and this land. I think it's great. I think the residential density population, moving all the residents away to help that separate from the new development and the commercial side of it, I think it's been done really well. My only issue with the map is in Zone 8. Up in the upper corner, um, on this screen, you'll see that you guys have fast food there. And that's only about a block away from Mathis Street, and right across the street from one of the people that were here earlier that lives on Mathis. And I think that's a really bad idea for Zone 8, at least in lots 74 and 73, to have a fast food restaurant, or what you guys classified as a high-traffic generator, such as a, a fast food restaurant or a convenience store. I think that's a bad idea there, as close as, as close as it is to the existing neighborhood. We might end up with a fast food restaurant that's running 24/7. There's nothing like here, and you want fries with that at 2:00 in the morning when the bars get out, and they decide to go there, all the lighting and traffic and other things. And if it's a high-traffic generator such as that, and, but a Mathis Street is just gonna be limited right in, right out, that doesn't really facilitate that, does it? So that's my concern. I'd like the city council to consider, at least when we, when you guys vote to net, or at least from the group here, that, at least for those two lots, remove that usage of what's called a, um, high-traffic generator, which would be fast food or a convenience store. I'd hate to see one sitting right there so far away. I think that really needs to move up to either Zone 4, 6, 9, or 10, which also allow those. I think that's a better use of that. Grosse, Harpy County was here, and there's been discussions in the past that maybe, um, Class A, um, office space, maybe that would be better in Zone 8 right there. Or maybe a destination restaurant that would have limited hours. If we can't agree to remove the high-traffic generator such as fast food or, uh, a convenience store, at least I hope we would consider limited hours so that it wouldn't impact the neighborhood negatively in terms of late-night hours and late hours. So that's my only consideration there.
Back to my second point and my last point would be the extension of Harrison Street all the way through here. I think it's a good idea. I disagree with Mr. Mungard tonight, that if I come south into the, to the division, to, to come and, and spend time and, and money down in the. I think it's a good idea. I disagree with Mr. Mumgarden tonight that if I come south into the, to the division to come and spend time and money down in the division or down in the, the development itself, wherever I would go, whether it's restaurants, et cetera. But when I'm leaving, I have to go back to 90th Street and head all the way around. That doesn't make any sense. So, it does need to be a true four-way, east-west, north-south. I don't think there's any other way to compromise that for, and I don't think, as was stated before, people will be coming out of this development that don't live in Trumbull Park. It doesn't make sense for somebody to, to go there when they know they're going into a residential neighborhood when they're trying to leave the development. And go east or west and get anything else. So, that's my, that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Any other comments? Welcome.
Hello, my name is Paula Adams and I live at 121 North Field Street. And what I have more is a question. Has a traffic study been done? It sounded like earlier in the testimony that you had done some consulting and there were some traffic studies done. And is too that information available? Thank you.
Traffic studies are done and there are public records. And if you want to reach out to the Planning Department, they can help facilitate you seeing that. Thank you. Any other comments? A closed public hearing. Do we have motion to approve Resolution R21-0207? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Clu. Any council discussion? Mr. Ingberg.
Audience who are here are testifying tonight. This is a preliminary plat. So, there may be changes and other things may be different by the time we get to final plat. So, just be aware of that as we go through the process.
Well, and on that note, there's several agreements that will be approved through this, too. A mixed-use agreement, which will get to some of the uses that was just referenced. And some of the items go back through the Planning Commission and City Council again, so there'll be a number of opportunities as it evolves for public hearing and additional information as well. Any other council discussion? Ms. Clu.
Thank you. I've got a lot of constituents who live on multiple sides of this. I am hearing you. I hear what you are saying. I also know what we have seen over the past multiple years that I've been here on City Council. Many of the developments that have come before us, before for this area have been complete train wrecks. They were going to put a lot of noise in your backyards. They were going to put entertainment districts in your backyards. They were things we absolutely did not want, even as recently as two, three years ago. We had a developer come in, very nice person, had a lot of really great properties, but still was not right for this community at all. This time, this developer came in and they said, how can we partner with you? We want to be successful because they knew that we've turned quite a bit of stuff down. We spent many nights as they indicated. They started with things that on 90th and 370, what they wanted and what we ultimately ended up with are not exactly 180 degrees different, but probably 160 degrees different. They actually have come to the table and are trying to work with us. Many of the changes that they've made, I think the developers have probably maybe lost some of their profit. And I hope you make a little money, but there's a limit to how much you need to make, too. We did go through many revisions. I talked to many of the constituents, some that are sitting here, some that were unable to make it. And went back to them and said, constituents, residents, people who are literally across the street on 90th Street, what do you want here? What can we offer them? To try to make this the best that we can make it. Developers, thank you. We're still watching. The residents still want to be happy living in Papillion. Change is always hard. It's really hard when we're used to pulling out of our neighborhoods and looking at cornfields and bean fields. That's what we kind of want. But we know it's not a reality and that we're going to have to address this change. Many things have been talked about, traffic, water, sewer systems. There are rules. There are regulations. The expectation is, as the developer, you will uphold those, move forward and work easily with us because that's what we need in this neighborhood and in this community. Residents, I encourage you to call the mayor's hotline and let us know if something's going wrong. I've been shocked at how many times I've heard, well, it's been bad for two or three years. And I'm like, I heard about it 10 minutes ago. I can't help you if I don't know what's going on. So, residents, you have some responsibilities too, and I'm thrilled with the number of you that have come out and spoken. So, having said that, as Councilman Ingberg said, there are still opportunities that things can change, that they may change. What we're truly working for is, change is coming and we need to work it out to be the best that we can possibly be to continue to be this Papillion proud and this Papillion strong that we are. So, we're watching you developers and we also appreciate the way you came to the table. Citizens, keep calling me. I do appreciate the conversations. Thank you.
Any other council discussion? And I'll note for the record, at the last council meeting, Mr. Sunday did declare a potential conflict and he'll be recusing himself from any of the votes related to that. Is this, that's still correct? Okay, thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Mumgarden. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Clu. Stube. Ingberg. Seven yeas, zero nays, one extension by Sunday.
Motion passes. Item F4, Ordinance 1942. An ordinance to amend Section 205-218 fence regulations of Article 34, supplemental site regulations of Chapter 205 zoning regulations to provide regulations for residential trash enclosures. The applicant is Councilman Steve Sunday. Residential trash enclosure amendment. This was tabled at the October 19th council meeting. And just before that, there was a motion to approve by Councilman Sunday and a second by Councilman Glover. And so, the motion is on the floor and we are at council discussion. And any council discussion? Mr. Sunday.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Mumgarden for helping to get this tabled so everybody here that wasn't here last week could, could be here to consider this request. I know this isn't as big of a deal perhaps as what you've all been talking about tonight, but nonetheless, I think it's important because it does involve a liberty interest of a citizen on his own property. And, and to me, that's a big deal. What he's asking, what Mr. Sergeant's asking, is a very small change to our ordinance to allow him to, to build a fence, no, no taller than six feet high, 100% opaque, so that he can cover up his trash cans by his house out front, extending no further than five feet. So, it's a very small allowance from what we allow now. Right now, the maximum height out front would be three feet. And I think Mr. Sergeant correctly pointed out, the reason that we came up with the three-feet limitation was because 40, 50 years ago, we can probably, a lot of us remember, trash cans were very short back then. So, the fences to cover those trash cans up obviously didn't need to be as high. What we're showing up here on the screen is what Mr. Sergeant has constructed and right now it's out of code. But it covers up his trash cans from view from the street. I submit that it's tasteful. It looks nice. I don't think it's offensive to the neighbors. I don't think it drives down anybody's property values. I think it's a very small concession to ask us to change our ordinance up a little bit, to allow for this sort of thing. He, and I know some, some may say, well, I need to put it on the side of his house. He's already explained that because of the sloping of his property and, and the water runoff, it just didn't work for him. I'll accept that at face value. I don't think this is offensive. And so, that's why I agreed to ask for this ordinance change here tonight. I think as elected officials, we should work with our citizens to try to help solve their needs so long as the neighbors are not negatively impacted. I believe that. So, I don't think this does that. I don't think this negatively impacts anybody. And so, again, that's why I'm asking for this very moderate change in our ordinance to allow us to enter into the 21st century where trash cans are taller than they used to be. And I have some other photos I'd like everybody to look at if we can move on. That's... Yeah, we can... Can you go to where the red circle is there? Okay, Mr. Sergeant, I don't know what we're looking at here. Oh, I see. Okay. You're, this is a neighbor on the same street. It's got items just stacked in the driveway, long-term, and brush just piled in the back, long-term. And we have a lot of photos. We move on. We don't, I don't want to waste too much time, but there, there's a neighbor that's got a bunch of junk just permanently stacked on the side of the house. There's what trash cans just stored out front. Looks like they're supposed to be against the house, but they're not. And I think if you just drive around Papillion, you're going to see people are not in compliance all throughout the city. And I'm not here to try to come down on any of those folks, but what I'm saying is, this looks better than that. So, that's what I'm saying. So, let's, let's make this permissible. It's not a big change and it does respect Mr. Sergeant's liberty interest in his own property to, to a very small extent. And I don't think it's a big ask. I really don't. I have a whole bunch of more pictures of decrepit properties that have been allowed to just go with, you know, uncut grass, unpainted home. We don't need to show them all. My point is the same. You know, there's junk piled out front there. Go to the next picture. These... Yeah, these are, these houses are in the same neighborhood as Mr. Sergeant. And, and nobody's bothering them. And I just think that Mr. Sergeant's being a good citizen, trying to make his house as presentable as he can. And he's asking us to change our statute in a very slight way to come into this century to recognize that trash cans are taller now. That's why I've asked this. That's why I've come for this council. And I did want the full council here to consider it. And again, I thank Mr. Mumgarden for helping to have that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. The three-foot you mentioned, I don't think ever had much to do with the height of garbage cans. At least my recollection over the last 30 years on the council is a fact. And when we've discussed heights in, about fences in front, it had more to do with preserving sight throughout the front of the residences rather than have six-foot blockade fences running clear up to the right-of-way and no visibility up and down the street, basically. Didn't really have to do, to my knowledge, with, with trash cans. I appreciate the fact this is brought to us, but I'm not going to vote for it for a simple reason. I don't like changing an ordinance to accommodate one situation. Now, if, if somebody wants to make a case that this was, and I agree, it's a nice-looking way he's done it. But the fact remains, we haven't heard from other people asking for the change. And I don't like changing an ordinance to accommodate one person. I don't think that's very fair. So, thank you, Mayor.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Mumgarden.
Well, okay, I will start by commending Mr. Sergeant for wanting to cover up and hide the garbage cans. I, you know, that's the right thing to do. And I understand that there are houses throughout the city, in your neighborhood and elsewhere, where people don't take care of the property. If that's true and there's an ordinance that they're in violation of, then they should be sanctioned. They should be turned in. They should be sanctioned and the city should do what it can to clean that up. But I, I guess I stand here, and frankly, I don't, I don't have any problem offering an amendment of, of an ordinance just to help out one person. I might have done that myself at times. But I look at this and I, and I think, well, what we're talking about here is adding, is allowing people to add a permanent structure into that front yard, an area that is very visible to everybody that lives there around or drives by. And I would only want to do that if I feel that that's a, something that actually is necessary and that the balance slips in favor of the homeowner. And, and I can't see that this is necessary. I understand that you might have some, some problems, some engineering problems putting the garbage cans on the side where there's a slope, et cetera. But I think that's where they belong. And then you put the fence in front of them, just like many other people have. And so, for that reason, I, I think the balance shifts in favor of everybody around you and against what you plan to do. So, I'll have to vote against it.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarden. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Clu. Stube. Ingberg. Two yeas, six nays by Mumgarden Glover Jaworski Clu Stube and Ingberg.
Motion fails. Next is item F5, Ordinance 1950. An ordinance to approve a request for a change of zone from CC Community Commercial and R4 Multi-Family Residential to CC Community Commercial and R4 Multi-Family Residential. For the property legally described as lots 1 through 4, 6, 7, and Outlet A. 72 place generally located southeast of 72nd Street and Shram Road. The applicant is Papio Park LLC, 72 place replat 1. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1950? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarden. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Clu. Stube. Ingberg. Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F6, Ordinance 1951. An ordinance to approve the vacation of South 71st Street and Flint Drive right-of-way, abutting lots 2 through 6. 72 place with title divestment, the abutting property owner. Papillion Shram Road Partners LLC. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1951? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarden. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Clu. Stube. Ingberg. Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next items are related to it as well. F7, Resolution R21-0210, a resolution to approve the first amendment to the 72-place maintenance agreement on street parking. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R21-010? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Clu. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarden. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Clu. Stube. Ingberg. Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F8, Resolution R21-0211. A resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as lots 1 through 4, 6, 7, and Outlet A. 72 place, together with vacated South 71st Street and Flint Drive right-of-ways. Generally located southeast of 72nd Street and Shram Road. The applicant's Papio Park LLC, 72 place replat 1. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R21-0211? Motion by Councilman Gaines. Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarden. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Clu. Stube. Ingberg. Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Also related, F9, Resolution R21-0212. A resolution to approve the first amendment to the 72-place subdivision agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R21-0212? Motion by Councilman Clu, second by, I missed it, Councilman Sunday. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarden. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Clu. Stube. Ingberg. Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F10, Resolution R21-0213. A resolution to approve a motion to reconsider for Resolution R21-0192. A resolution to approve the proposed scope of services and proposal for topographic survey for North Beetle, North Osage, and East 3rd Street extensions from Thompson, Driesen, and Dorner. The motion to reconsider was requested by Councilman Jaworski. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R21-0213? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents or opponents on the motion to reconsider? Do we have any proponents or opponents on the motion to reconsider? Yes. And if you'd state your name for the record when you come up.
Hi, I'm Bill Smith. I live at 121 North Beetle Street. Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. There's been a lot of ground covered here tonight. So, I just was looking at the agenda, and I realized there were two resolutions having to do with these streets, and that confused me a little bit, but that's okay. I have my notes to go by. So, you've heard my position. I'm pretty firmly opposed to all of these extensions, both now and in the future. So, moving forward from there, a lot of, uh, discussion has been had, and you've heard a lot of people comment on their concerns of what these extensions will do to the, their neighborhood, our neighborhood. And those, those, uh, concerns are traffic, safety, noise, potential increase in crime. So, you know, a- along with that, I'd like to focus at this point a little more just on the first two, and that's the traffic and the safety. And as you walk through the neighborhoods, I did just, this just the other day to verify myself, those streets have a driving surface that's twenty-one feet wide. On the side of that is a, a formed curb that adds another foot. I don't think you could really call it a driving surface, but it does add another foot. So, with that, there's parking on one side of the street. Now, we've all driven in there, we all know what happens when two cars in opposite directions come. One stops, the other one goes by. There's a pinch point. That happens with the traffic that's there now. Opening these streets up is going to increase the traffic, whether it's the neighborhood going out that way, as it seems to be intended, or whether it's new traffic coming in, those pinch points are going to be worse. And I think that, you know, it really does speak to that concern about the traffic and the safety, and probably a little bit to the noise, too, because a car starting from a stop is a little bit louder than a car that just rolls by. So, my, I guess my summary statement there would be that it doesn't really seem like these streets were intended as thoroughfares. Six, in nineteen sixty or whenever the neighborhood was built, if they wanted thoroughfares there, they would have made them twenty-five feet or bigger so that the cars could pass easily. So, now, what's, what we're talking about right now is the, the motion to approve the road study, the, the work by the engineering firm, the road study, the town hall, and some design work. And I'm going to start with the road study, and there was one answer here a little earlier, but, you know, I, I'd like to be able to see a, a description of exactly what they're going to measure, and, you know, I think that would be helpful if, if that's available. I don't know if the planning commissioner, Jeff Thompson, has that kind of information, or is that something that I would have to get from the engineering firm? Is it public knowledge?
The scope of work, we could, um, probably the best point of contact would be our city engineer, and then you can see the scope of work. Yeah.
So, that, that would be a help. And will, will that process of the road study be done before the town hall meetings happen?
So, the process would be if this motion to reconsider is even approved. If it's not approved, nothing else happens. Um, if it is approved, then the next agenda item is to propose, to approve the scope of services. And then, all that's doing then, well, they tie enough together, and it probably, what you're saying could weigh in if somebody wants to reconsider, so I'm letting it all go. Um, so, if, if the motion to reconsider passed, then we go to the next agen- agenda item, which is to propose the scope of services and the, the survey. Um, that would be the authorization to do that body of work. And so, there, at that point, there wouldn't be any other, um, council items, they just do the study. Now, that's, once that study is completed, nothing else occurs without an action of the body. Um, there's been no money, um, authorized for building of roads in the current budget year, and so, even if they would want to proceed, that would have to be in next year's budget, which literally is a year from now. Um, once that's approved, then they'd have to go through the work of defining the scope of services for the construction. Those agreements now come back for, be forced again. So, assuming if everything would move forward, there'd be a number of opportunities to come back before us in the next couple, three years. I don't know if that answered your question, but tonight is not the last item.
Yes.
And there'll be a number of public hearings related to that. Yeah.
It's inching forward.
It's inching, if this is approved, it is one of the inches forward, correct?
You know, our concern is...
Correct.
Is why now, because we see that inching forward.
Yep.
So, I, I feel that having that road study information at the time, these town hall meetings are held by the engineering firm, would be good for us to be able to discuss. That's, that's my point there. And, uh, it was stated earlier that the, the results of the, the road study are available for the public. I'm hoping that's in raw data and not somebody's interpretation, because with all this, you know, raw data or statistics, can the interpretative, interpretative, more than one way. So, that, that brings me to my, my last little piece here, and it's kind of, to use the term you used, body of work, I would call it a unit of work, maybe. And that's that we're, we're talking about some discovery and then some design work. And it seems to me there should be a decision in between. And from my understanding of what we're contracting, we, the city, is contracting the engineering firm for, they're going straight through the discovery of the road study, the town hall, that type of work, going straight through the design work that we're going to be paying for before a decision is made to move forward into that.
If the motion to reconsider is approved, then the next agenda item would be exactly what you described, correct?
Right. So, I think that's a flaw. And I think, in industry, that would never work. They would want to help design the discovery first, then they're going to do the design with the decision in between. So, I speculate why this is set up that way.
Want to clarify, it wouldn't be the final design, it'd be the topographic of it.
But it's an expensive...
Yeah.
So, that's why I'm saying if we, if this did get stopped, say, say they did the, they do the road study, they do the town, town hall, then we had a, a meeting and said, well, do we go from here?
Right.
If everyone had that information, that's the information that's needed to make a decision on this. If the design could be made then, they wouldn't have to pay for the topographic survey or whatever.
Yeah.
That part of it. So, I would, what I would request would be a motion here to separate that work and put the decision in the middle. A motion by a council member.
And well, then, that would be appropriate on the, we'll carry the comments over, so it's not inappropriate, but that specific comment will be relevant to the next agenda item if the motion to reconsider passes. So, but we'll carry the comments over, so it'll still be relevant.
That's it.
All right.
That's it.
All right. Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents? Yes.
Sorry, public speech thing, but, uh, I kind of want to have a beer now. It's been a little, little long, been trying to fake this whole time, but, um, my name's Jason. Um, I live on 310 North Osage, so I'm kind of like where the third street and, uh, Osage meet. I live on that street. I just bought a house last year, um, used a VA loan, I'm a twenty-year military vet, um, been multiple deployments, it's my, it's my peaceful place. I come home to every day, and, um, there's no traffic, there's no crime, it's just a peaceful place to live. And I honestly don't see the point in even spending this money to do a traffic study, because these streets aren't even open yet to do a traffic study on. So, I don't understand how you're going to do a traffic study with streets that are closed, because are you going to stop everybody that pulls out of the driveway and says, "Hey, which way are you going? Are you going that way to work?" If I go to the military base, I'm, I'm not off it, but if I go to Lincoln or Ashland, I go out towards Eighty-fourth Street, or I go down towards First Street. If I go downtown to my job, downtown, I'll just go to Grandview to Hornhusker there. But for everybody that lives there, they don't mind going out those alleys. Those alleys aren't out of the way, they're inconvenient. I'm just asking that you wouldn't spend this money to do a traffic study that we might get constructive results from, that they might be positive towards the developers to do this, because we really don't want it. A lot of people in our neighborhood do not want this, um, street open, any one of them, all three of them, so I just wanted to let you know my, I just, I don't want it, and I don't think a lot of my neighbors don't want it, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Tony, 627 Osage Drive. Um, I, I guess my thing is, is what's the point of doing this? Uh, these streets, as, as you mentioned, were designed very narrowly back in the six, or fifties or sixties, whenever the neighborhood was built. There's no sidewalks. A, a lot of the neighborhood does not have sidewalks at all. I have a daughter that just rides around in the street because we don't have any traffic, and it, it just doesn't serve her point. So, I guess my thing is, is why, why are we considering spending money on something that no one has really said why we're doing it? I mean, I know that we have a lot of congestion from the holiday festival, um, and, you know, whatever, that's fine, but it ju, it doesn't seem like we're, we're thinking through why we're spending it just for one or two days. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Wosley. I live at 302 North Osage Street, or better known as the intersection of Third and North Osage, right where two of these are, um, proposed to happen. And, uh, I, I have a question in particular. Two weeks ago, this could have died quietly and gone away, and it was resurrected, or what I believe is maybe not fully standard procedure, or not often-used procedure. So, I'd like to hear from this council, why is this so important to push this through when you've heard back in August from us, the citizens in this neighborhood, "We don't want this." We gave you a petition with names, a lot more of us came and spoke. Two weeks ago, people stood up and spoke, and unfortunately couldn't be here then, but I'd like to hear from you guys as to why this is so important, we had to bring it back. Again, your constituents have all, to my knowledge, all stood up and said, "No, we don't want this to happen."
So, once we're done, proponents, opponents, we'll have council discussion, so then they'll, they'll comment. But procedurally, raised very good things, some, some people may not understand what's going on. Robert's Rule of Order allows for, once, once an item is voted on, it's generally done. Uh, but Robert's Rule does allow a provision that if somebody had voted against it or was not present, they have the ability to request that that item be brought back for reconsideration, and that's, that's what's being done tonight. Uh, there were several council members missing last week, and so the fact they weren't here gave them the right to request it to be brought back under Robert's Rule, and so that's what's being done tonight procedurally. Okay. Next.
Hello again. My name is still Paula Adams, and I still live at 121 North Beetle Street. You know, we collected forty-two signatures against this, and of course, I'm against it because I live right on the corner of where Beetle Street is. But as Ms. Klug pointed out, the residents have a responsibility to come and make their opinions known to the council members. We, as residents, have done that on these proposals. Now, I've heard a bit back from Mr. Mungard, and I truly appreciate people being responsive. He makes a good point that this has been in the historic plan, but times have changed. Papillion is not the same as it was when that plan has been drawn up. I've heard a bit from Mr. Engberg, but again, as my neighbor pointed out, I would like to know exactly why it's so important to these council members to bring it back. And I haven't heard the answers to those questions. I truly believe that we have a responsibility to communicate with each other. That's what makes government work, and it works for the people. And we elected you to make good decisions, but also to listen to us. So, I'm asking you to do that. Now, I want to look, I noticed that you talked about another development, and some of the things I noticed about that, again, Bill mentioned, the traffic study was done independently. I'm kind of curious, I mean, it seems like we bundled this package, and you explained part of it, that this is just a, a preliminary cost estimate, but I don't understand, and, Ms. Klug made a really good point. She says, "I want to know what the traffic study says. I mean, it might support us, it might not, but I'd kind of like to know, too. But I don't want this to become a design ball where we've done the traffic study, we've purchased a preliminary design. Why is this together? I, 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 this seems like it's shutting out possibilities. You folks brought up the fact that Eighty-fourth Street is probably going to get a lot more traffic because we got a new proposed development. Before, I heard other council members talk about, well, and you, Klug, Ms. Klug, mentioned it specifically, "I want to know what the traffic is going to be like, that's why I'm voting for this, thank you for telling me that." But it seems to me that this is not the only concern that you expressed. It seems to me that it's summarizing some of the other stuff that's happening on Eighty-fourth Street and the development. And I believe by limiting our traffic study to just what you're doing, I'm not actually hearing the council do what it, it sounds like they'd like to do in betterment for the citizens of Papillion. So, again, I'd like to hear why exactly you guys think this particular set of three streets is so important. I also noticed when the developer talked about this, one of the comments he said was, "I do not want to traffic directly through the neighborhoods. By putting these streets through, we get traffic directly through residential neighborhoods." Now, it seems to me interesting that we are proposing and looking at designs where we purposefully don't put traffic through neighborhoods, but now we're looking at existing neighborhoods and saying, "Yes, let's put traffic through neighborhoods, let's make it harder on the residents." I don't think that's intentional. I think, like Mr. Mungard pointed out, they're trying to find a solution for a bigger problem in the downtown area, but I think this resolution, the way it's worded, limits what you're trying to do and the problem. So, I'm asking that we look at separately a traffic study and get some feedback from that so intelligence decisions can be made upon this, and not limit ourselves to just these three items, because it doesn't sound like that's truly the root of the controversy here. And realize that we, as the people of Papillion and as the people in the neighborhood, are doing our part to let you know what we believe. So, I think government works when we listen to each other. So, now I'd like to listen, thank you kindly.
Thank you. Anybody else?
In the, so we are at council discussion. Mr. Engberg.
Well, first of all, I hate to bring this up, but, uh, a question about reconsideration. I don't think that we could vote on, on this tonight. I don't think legally we can. I'll refer that to this, to the city attorney, but in order to reconsider something, knowing you have to request it, but the person requests it is required by our ordinance to provide to you, Mayor, and all the council people in writing the reasons they want to reconsider it, the purpose of it. I have never received that on this item. I don't know if anybody else has. So, I don't think that we could vote on reconsideration without that, because the ordinance requires it. So, I don't think we could vote to reconsider this tonight.
Mr. Thiel.
I know that, that at least it used to be a, a requirement. I'm just looking it up now to see if it's still on the books, because I know that we changed some of the rules the last year or two.
Well, all I know is in our, in our package, it principally highlights the ordinance, and I assume the staff puts current information in our package, and it's, it's spelled... And it's, it's spelled out there.
It does state, upon receiving a request to place a motion for reconsideration on an agenda, the city clerk shall promptly notify all council members of the request. And then it goes on to say, any council member making a request for the motion to reconsider shall provide to the mayor and other members of the city council a written explanation delineating the reasons for said request. So, that's what it said. I don't, I'm not familiar with what notices went out.
Well, to the clerk.
We did, as a staff, send notice that the request had been received. I did not receive a written explanation for the request, but I don't know what the council received.
Ms. Powers.
So, there was an email sent to council requesting a motion to reconsider. What I think the question is, was, does it say specifically why? Which we know why was Councilmember Jaworski was not present. But I, I can't recall if that was specifically in the email, and, and perhaps it wasn't. I'm, I'm assuming it wasn't based on what Ingberg is saying. But the email was sent out that said that, that he was requesting a motion to reconsider to the council and to Mayor Black.
Mr. Ingberg. Can, can you turn your mic back on? I might have to. Should be on. There you go.
Well, I, I, maybe I misunderstood. But I recently did two reconsiderations because clerical errors. And it wasn't just that I wasn't here, so we gotta do this. It was, I had to spell out why we need to do it, what clerical errors there were, and those types of things. I don't think the ordinance, uh, it's, the way I understood it, Mr. Mungard was involved in reconsideration much more than I am. But it wasn't a matter of, he said to the council, I wanna, I wanna talk about this again because I wasn't there. It generally requires, I, my understanding was, it generally requires an explanation why it would make a difference for us to reconsider. So, yeah, I, I defer to the city attorney. I'm, I'm not an attorney, but I just wanna make sure if we're gonna do a reconsideration, it needs to be legal.
Well, I guess I'll look to Mr. Thiel to make that interpretation.
It, it says that the explanation has to delineate the reasons for said request. So, that has to be done. There's nothing else here that says what grounds constitute motion, grounds for, uh, motion for reconsideration. Conceivably, yes, but just the simple fact that somebody's absent, that could be stated as the reason for the request.
Mr. Mungard.
I, I guess I was wondering, how did Mr. Jaworski ask the city clerk to put this on for reconsideration? Was that in an email?
It wa- it was the email.
And did that email from him indicate he was absent? I guess I think, I think I saw the email, and it certainly, I understood that he was requesting reconsideration because he was absent. To my mind, that sufficiently satisfies the ordinance. I'll leave it to the city attorney. But I look at it and say, well, why, why do we say that? And I say that we say that so that we can make it, the other members can make a decision on whether they will or won't support the motion to reconsider. And from my standpoint, I can only speak for myself, but the fact that he was absent, didn't get a chance to vote, and now wants a chance to vote, that is sufficient for me to understand why he's asking and how I should vote on this. And that, to me, that satisfies the intent of that portion of the ordinance, but I'll leave that to the city attorney.
Mr. Sunday.
I shockingly agree with Councilman Mungard. Let, let's, let's be straight about this. Last week, the vote was four to one in favor of the proposal to do this study. Four to one. The reason it didn't pass is because, one, uh, we, we had a quorum of five here, so we needed all five votes, because otherwise, uh, it, it couldn't pass. So, the one nay vote, which was Councilman Ingberg, and I completely respect and understand the reason for your vote that way, but it, it wasn't a full representation of the full council. And I think that's what Mr. Jaworski's, uh, request is saying, is that, you know, this is important enough that we, we should have all of us weigh in on where we stand on this. And, and I think it's sufficient as well. So, I agree with Councilman Mungard. I'm gonna say that again, because, all right.
Thank you. Mr. Gaines.
So, uh, the day after the, the last meeting, when Councilman Jaworski reached out to me, I, I understood hid the rationale that it did need to be heard before the entire council. Um, I also reached out to the city administrator, and I agree with a lot of the people in the crowd, that this does need to be separate, in my opinion. There needs to be a survey of the streets, and I actually have a, an amendment that if this passes, I will propose. But I do agree that we need to do a street study, and then it will come back before the council. And then if we decide to do a topographical and design, then we'll make that decision at that time. But I am gonna support this at this point.
Mr. Ingberg.
I think some people are misunderstanding. I didn't once disagree with Mr. Jaworski's, uh, reasoning if, if it is because he was not here, wants to vote. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, if we're going to do it, you need to do it correctly. Uh, so, uh, I'm sure there'll be plenty of votes to do the reconsideration, even if it is improper. But I'm gonna vote no, only for that reason. Not because of Mr. Jaworski's reasoning, but because I don't think it's done properly.
Mr. Mungard.
You know, and I'll tell you, Councilman Ingberg, uh, I see your point. I'm glad you asked the question. Does what happened, uh, what Mr. Jaworski did or didn't do, does that meet the, uh, requirement of the ordinance? Good question. I'm glad you asked it. I guess I'm just gonna sit here and say, you know, and in the future, I'd say, yeah, when you do ask for reconsideration, you need to, A, put it right, and B, explain it in some fashion. I think what happened here satisfies that ordinance, so I'm gonna vote to go ahead and reconsider and put it back on.
Any other council discussion? Please vote. A yes vote will be to approve the reconsideration and put it back on the motion on floor, and a no vote would not. Please vote.
Sunday. Mungard. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Kluk. Stube. Ingberg. Seven yeas, one nay by Ingberg.
So, motion to reconsider passes, so we do go on to item F-11. Resolution R-21-0192, a resolution to approve the proposed scope of services and proposal for topographic survey for North Beetle, North Osage, and East Third Street extensions from Thompson, Greason, and Dorner. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R-21-0192? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines. Mr. Gaines, did you have a mo-, uh, a motion to amend that you wanted to propose?
I do. I'd like to propose a motion to amend. Currently, it says that it will allow the City of Papillion to approve a, the proposed scope of services proposal for topographic survey. Um, I would like to change that, that basically is, and I, you want me to read the whole amendment, or?
Please.
Okay. So, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the City of Papillion, that an agreement between the City of Papillion and Felsburg, Holton, and Yulvig for a traffic impact study in downtown Papillion, including Washington Street, First Street, and Sixth Street, and including possible street extensions of North Beetle, North Osage, and Third Streets for the 2021, 2022 street extensions project for an amount not to exceed $12,000 is hereby approved. So, what I would like to point out is that currently, the way that it's written, the cost is $119,700. If we do the streets survey first, it will reduce that cost down to $12,000, which will give us a chance to actually look at what impact that this is having. So, that is the amendment that I propose.
And council should have a hard copy of that at their, uh, at their seats. Um, so we have a substitute motion. Um, is there a second? Second by Councilman Sunday. Um, proponents or opponents? And all the comments made previously will carry over to this item as well. Um, but if anybody else wants to share anything? And if you'd restate your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mike Wosley, 302 North Osage. Just working on getting over my fear of public speaking tonight. Councilman Gaines, thank you for separating that out as a separate item and greatly reducing the cost. Um, I'm still gonna get up here and stay the vast majority of us in that neighborhood. In fact, everyone I know, everyone that I know of that you've heard from, uh, wouldn't care if it cost zero dollars. We still don't want this to go through, no matter what. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Yeah, so just a couple of questions. One would be, is that we're asking somebody other than TD2 that provided this original scope of services to do a study? Is that, is that what's being proposed?
The motion that he proposed has Felsburg, Holton, and Yulvig doing a traffic impact study in downtown Papillion. Do you, you should have a copy of that at your.
Yeah. I, I guess I'm just kinda questioning that, wasn't that part of TD2's original scope that included two different items in there? So, we're asking somebody outside of, of TD2 that did the original? Uh, 'cause I, I see two different costs in here, obviously. One was, um...
The mo-, the substitute motion as presented does have, is not the TD2. It's specific to Felsburg.
Yeah, but TD2 has a $34,000 scope, $34,500 scope. They have a $74,900 scope for a total estimated cost of, of $109,000. So, I'm just, I'm a little confused on what we're, what we're looking at here.
You wanna clear confusion?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
I'm Alex Evans, City Engineer. So, the, the proposal from TD2 on the original, uh, resolution includes scope of services as other services for that traffic impact study, which would be subbed out to FHU. And so, this, with this motion to just do the traffic impact study, we decided, after you've talked about these consultants, it's, it's better just go to FHU, who would be doing that portion only other, of it, otherwise we'd have TD2 sign a contract of work.
Understood. So, so FHU was gonna be a subconsultant to TD2. We're breaking that out then? Specifically, he's requesting that we directly contract with FHU versus having another consultant to add on their five percent or whatever to manage that. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
That is the question. Any other counsel? Mr. Mungard.
Okay, uh, City Engineer back up. I, I guess I'll show my confusion, because the proposal from Thompson, Greason, Dorner says that they propose to provide the above scope of work for the lump sum fee of $34,500. Uh, and I look at how much of that list immediately above, the lump sum, you know, the above scope of work, do we get for the $34,500?
So, everything on that list that doesn't have parentheses, other services behind it? Would be the $34,000, the other services in the second paragraph after the bullet items? Is the total for the other services?
Okay, so, we don't get the traffic flow evaluation for $34,500 then?
It would, it'd be part of the $100... Or $74,000.
Okay, thanks.
Any other council discussion? So, the vote, a yes vote would be, would be to approve Mr. Gaines' substitute motion. A no vote would deny that. We'd be back to the original motion as presented.
Mayor, it's, it's not a substitute motion. It's just a motion to amend.
Okay.
So, that if this motion to amend passes, then we go on to the main motion, which is, uh, the resolution as amended.
Yes.
So, this is a, a, not a substitute motion, but a change. $12,000 is an improvement over $190,000 or $100-some thousand dollars. So, I could vote for that, and then we subsequently will vote on agreement for that, correct? So, I could vote yes for the amendment, but no for the, the actual.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That is correct. Any other discussion? Please vote. And again, a yes vote will limit the scope. A no vote would keep it as it originally proposed.
Sunday. Mungard. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Kluk. Stube. Ingberg. Two yeas, six nays by Mungard, Glover, Jaworski, Kluk, Stube, and Ingberg.
So, we are back to the original motion, and we're in council discussion. Mr. Gaines.
Um, as it stands, I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse. And I'm, I'm actually kinda shocked that that amendment didn't pass. Simply because we're going to do a survey of the streets, we're going to design it, and we're going to, you know, do a bunch of other things prior to know if it's even, even knowing if it's a good idea. Um, therefore, I'm gonna vote against it.
Mr. Ingberg.
Well, I don't wanna rehash everything I said last time, although I know certainly you weren't here. But what it boils down to me is this. I, you know, I, I think, Mr. Gaines, your, your amendment would have been, is, is an improvement. But on the other hand, I couldn't vote for it, nor can I vote for this, because I supposed to be here representing people in Ward Two. They do not want it. And they do not want us spending $100-some thousand dollars to study it. They don't want us to spend whatever, uh, the amount it's going to cost to build it. And so, I'm gonna continue to vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Jaworski.
Okay, I'm a little confused here too, but I'm gonna try and figure this out. We're gonna do the traffic study. We're gonna do the topographic survey. And then they're gonna come back and say, this is what it's gonna cost if we still wanna do this, right? I mean, just 'cause we're passing this still doesn't mean we're putting the road in. Am I correct?
That's correct. We haven't even authorized any dollars to do anything beyond this.
To be honest, if we just do the traffic study and not know what it costs, we're kinda spinning our wheels. This way, we know, who knows, this could come in, I'm just gonna throw a number out there, $10 million. Well, we're not gonna put it in for that. So, let us get this done, see what needs to be done, and this might all go away. We don't know. So, that's why I brought this back up. I wanna see what's happening. The engineers say they would like to see this study come through and would like to see what the cost would be to do this. So, let's just see this. Every, that's, we just all need to relax and see what happens. And then we go from there. Thank you.
Mr. Gaines.
Well, I'd like to respond to Mr. Ingberg's comment. Earlier on in this meeting tonight, uh, you spoke about not doing what one citizen wants. And what I heard from the people that were speaking tonight is that this is about what forty-two citizens want. So, the reason why I wanted to do the traffic study first was twofold. Number one, if this turns out to be a disaster, then we've wasted $12,000, not $119,000. That's a response to Councilman Jaworski's. But secondly, is that if it turns out to be a disaster, then, if it turns out to be something that alleviates a problem with the entire city of Papillion, or an entire portion of the city, it's much larger than just forty-two people. This, we don't know what this is going to do until we do a traffic study. But I, I listened to what the citizens of every ward, what they want. And I, and that was why, prior to even hearing these, these things tonight, I put in a different amendment to do this traffic study. But just because somebody doesn't want something done, doesn't mean that it's not in the best interests of the entire City of Papillion. Regardless, I'm still voting against this, but I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Ms. Kluk.
Thank you. There's been a lot of discussion by many residents here. And I think it's important to know that not all discussion happens in an open meeting. Um, I appreciate the emails and the phone calls, as I discussed. that not all discussion happens in an open meeting. Um, I appreciate the emails and the phone calls, as I discussed in a previous discussion, um, item. But I think we need to look at the whole picture of this. Uh, several comments have been made about the roads were started, but they were stubbed out. To me, that indicates that in the 1960s, when that neighborhood was built, the intention was to eventually make the connection go through. That there was a design and a thought by those people who built that area. So that's why I'm curious to see what a traffic study and what it might look like, but through the information we'll receive with this. The other items I've become more aware of is, if we get these connections to have the exits for those 42 neighbors, plus maybe a few others, the exit will go a different direction. That will remove traffic off of E-6th Street. That keeps E-6th Street more viable for a longer amount of time. Seems like a good idea to me. Keep local traffic local. Get out on your own streets through the closest main area that you've got, as opposed to continuing to go to a further away one. I also think there's something to be said about, um, getting emergency services to the homes as quickly as we can. If you look at where some of these fire stations are, and the extra blocks that they would have to cover to get into this neighborhood, it becomes a concern. Do we really wanna wait that extra four minutes, five minutes? Whatever it may take, and maybe the chief will tell me I'm over-exaggerating, but when it's a heart attack or a house burning down, those extra moments that we're waiting for an emergency vehicle to get someplace makes a big difference. And that's why connectivity is so vital to us. So I think we need to remember, as Councilman Jaworski said, we're getting the information. We're trying to do a good job to figure out what it is that could be done, what is the cost going to be, and doesn't make sense for the entire community of Papillion to do it. So I will be supporting this, so that we have full information as we move forward, to figure out where we should go with our roads dollars.
I agree that those of us who do not directly represent Ward 2, uh, have a responsibility and a duty to represent the interests of all of the citizens of Papillion. I would like to see the study, so that we can make an intelligent and informed decision as to whether this expanded connectivity can help alleviate, uh, some bottlenecks that are occurring at some of the major thoroughfares that border this neighborhood. I used to live on East Second Street, probably 30 years ago, when I was in school. So I know that when you leave there, you either, basically you either have to go north to Sixth Street, or, or west. Well, I guess you can get down on First Street there too, but, um, or west to 84th. I know a lot of cars are turning left onto 84th from Third or Fourth, and that creates problems. I, I, my son and I, this is probably four or five years ago, were driving down south on 84th Street in the far lane away from, um, this neighborhood, so on the west side of 84th Street southbound. And an older gentleman came out, left turn from Third Street, came all the way across 84th Street, or Wash-, Washington, and slammed into my son and I, and, and that was kinda an eye-opener, how dangerous that is. And, and I was in the far lane. And so I know that there's a danger there from all these cars from that neighborhood having to use 84th Street to get where they're going when they're heading south. So I, I'm interested in seeing what the impact would be. I haven't made a final decision, but I'd like to see the results of a study, and that's why I'm supporting.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Clu. Stube. Ingberg. Six yeas, two nays by Gaines and Ingberg.
Motion passes. All the regular agenda items, committee reports. I think the only one that's met is public safety, which would be Chairman Stube.
Yeah, so, so we had, uh, one item on our discussion agenda tonight, and that was relative to, uh, Highway 50, uh, speed limits. Uh, we've, we've got an indication from the DOT that, that has ownership of, of Highway 50. They've indicated that they wanna see, uh, reduction in the, uh, speed limit on Highway 50 from 65 down to 60, which would be consistent essentially with that whole stretch of Highway 50 from Springfield all the way north, until it gets close to, uh, Highway 370. And so, um, we had discussion in the, in the committee meeting, and, and, uh, uh, we were all in approval that, uh, we should move forward for full city council approval of changing that speed limit in accordance with what the recommendation was by the DOT.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the floor? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record again. Welcome.
Thank you, Mike Erdman, 92, uh, Sixth House, Madison Street. Just one last thought about the development. I know we've passed the, uh, the zoning, and also the preliminary platte with the development on 84th and 370, but, um, there seems to be some contention about extending Harrison and Valley Road. Sometimes I think that citizens don't understand that sometimes the greater good versus the impact and the compromises that they have to make. Just in the last 18 months, in that same neighborhood, we've expanded the street, the corner at 84th, or, excuse me, at, uh, Madison and Grunter Street, to accommodate, um, Yocum concrete, uh, the occasional truck that gets, uh, comes down 90th Street to Grunter and has to come through the neighborhood. I lost some, uh, right-of-way. Um, I had, uh, the traffic moved closer to my house. And now, traffic increased, which means there was more traffic in my neighborhood. When everybody found that that was a, a bigger intersection to go through, and closed a little better. So that increase in traffic created a line-of-sight issue coming down for the parking on the, uh, west side, the east side of the street on Madison. And then that, the parking was eliminated. Now the parking's moved to Grunter Street on my, uh, in front of the driveway of my DTS garage, which makes it more difficult to get into my garage. So I've been impacted by losing right-of-way, more traffic coming by my house, and harder to park. But the greater good is my neighborhood. Traffic flows better, it's safer, and the impact of me, the benefit to my neighborhood and community is greater than the impact or the inconvenience or compromises that I've had to make. And I hope everybody will understand that when discussions go further, possibly, on the extension of Harrison Street and the extension on Valley Road. I hope they see the greater good in that for the benefit of their community, and that, uh, the impact will be lessened just by the benefit of, based, uh, based on their compromise that they have to make. So that's just my thoughts.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Um, any council comments? Mr. Jaworski.
I'd just like to say thank you to the City of Papillion for Fall Cleanup Days. I used, used it three times. It's awesome. Thank you very much.
And, uh, time to thank the staff too, and the cooperation with the City of La Vista. It's been a good partnership, so appreciate everybody. I know it's a lot of work. Any other council comments? Last couple of weeks, um, wastewater agency had a, had its monthly meeting. Um, the main item is, uh, approved a contractor bid for starting that forced main down Platteville Road, which starts getting the infrastructure in place. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sa-
I, I have a question about the Fall Cleanup Days.
Yep, go ahead.
Plane, but...
No, go ahead.
I noticed that, you know, the leaves are really just started falling in earnest just in the last few days. Maybe it would have been better had we waited a week or two to have the, maybe next year, maybe we should wait a week or two, is what I'm suggesting. So that, uh, you know, because now everybody's gonna be raking up those leaves, and won't ha- That's all, that's all I had. And I'm not, I'm not saying it to complain. I'm just thinking that maybe that would be better next year.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you. So the sewer agency met, so the main item was approving the contract to start the work on the forced main, so the contractor was selected. Um, the agency is getting a loan from the state of Nebraska for a large portion of that. And then as development occurs and people connect in, that'll, that'll repay that loan, but allow us to jumpstart. Uh, but there was a delay in the agreement with the state on the loan, and so the agency actually approved, um, expending the dollars with the contractor, at least to buy the materials, the pipe and that type of thing. Um, with the supply chain issues and the cost and a lot of stuff, there was a concern of, if we didn't acquire that, were we gonna delay the project? So we did authorize expending those dollars. And then, uh, the loan agreement should be approved at this next item. So a lot of movement on the agency's side. Um, Papillion 150 continues. It had a, it had a, uh, kind of a finale downtown. Um, I think there'll be one last project. That'll kinda be a legacy project. Um, and then, a lot of things really to Judge O'Neill, who spearheaded a vast, vast majority of that, and Laura Swartz at the foundation, who did a lot of the heavy lifting too, that wasn't even asked for, but the foundation really stepped up. Um, had the dedication. Number, uh, council members were there for the Boy Scout cabin restoration project, uh, another good project. Um, that cabin, I don't think would have survived another winter if that project wasn't done. And the Boy Scout troop actually was challenged with raising $30,000, uh, to make that happen. And, um, I think one of the neat things about the dedication, that people were not aware, aware of, scouts got to about $15,000 in raising the funds in about six months, and then it kinda slowed down and stalled. And an individual whose kids had gone through that troop, came to him and said, how much money did they need? And they said $15,000, and she wrote him a check for $15,000 to bring it over the top. Her reason, and she spoke at the dedication, is her husband had committed suicide. And he was very involved in that troop, and the kids went through that troop, and she said, what can she do to kind of honor him, so he's not remembered for his last event, but more of his life? And so she spoke at the dedication for, uh, American Foundation for Suicide Awareness. So, uh, neat project that ended up being a little bit more than just the cabin. So, um, Ms. Clu represented the scouts and spoke as well. So thank you for that. A really, really good project to see that going on for another 50 years, hopefully. Um, and then, uh, we had a United Cities meeting. Um, nothing major out of that. It's just a good reminder that if there's an area of interest that you have down at the state capitol that involves legislation, make sure we're, we're aware of that, so we can be working on that. Um, from a cycle perspective, when the legislature comes back in in January, they're at the second year of their biennium, which is the 60-day short session. So most likely, and not a lot, will be done if we introduce something. But the timing to introduce is good, because that gives us that year to work with the legislature and other folks to craft it then for the next long session. So if you've got something of interest, um, make sure we're aware. I mentioned the foundation. Um, it, press release went out, I think, yesterday, that Laura Swartz, uh, the executive director's resigned. Um, she's taken a position with a local company, and, um, Joe Hunter, who is working for the foundation, will step into an interim role, and then the board will, will do the hiring. Um, they have an independent board, so that's not a city hire. Um, again, a reminder, November 5th, Friday night, are the lights landing, uh, this Friday. And then the last thing is city hall renovation. Um, I think we were hoping maybe December we'd be moving in. January's probably more realistic. Again, we're being hit somewhat by those same supply chain issues. Um, some of the contractors needing equipment, it's getting delayed a little bit. And instead of pushing them, we said, let's, let's delay it a little bit and, uh, not push them. So probably, middle of January, probably move in. So... There you go. Well, we got that noted. Make that... There you go. So I think it's most of the last couple of weeks. Any other council comments? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Clu? Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Clu. Stube. Ingberg. Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. We are adjourned.